All right. I'd like to call to order the March 19th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. Before you, you have the minutes from our March 5th meeting. And if I could have you take a look at them and when you've had a chance, if I could get someone to move to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion? Sherri? A second. Katrina? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to the review and approval agenda. We have one item to add to tonight's agenda. It should be in what you have in front of you, but it's the Saks PTC donation in the action items. It'll be the last item on the action items. If I could get a motion to amend the agenda to add that donation. Penny? Second. Hazel? All those in favor? Okay. It's unanimous. Okay. So if we could move on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time. Oh, sorry. You know what? I need to back up. Could I have a motion to approve the amended agenda? Brandon? A second. Jen? All those in favor? Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. Comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone wishing to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. And the first item in the reports and recognition is the library and technology update with Mr. Salvastrini.
Good evening. As Mr. Salvastrini is getting set up, I just wanted to introduce Mr. Salvastrini again to the board. He'll be giving us an update. He's our Director of Digital Learning and he'll be giving us an update on how we're working towards our district goals in regards to library and technology. I know that he'll be introducing some of the people that are here with him this evening who will also be available to answer any questions that you might have in regards to his update.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Quaranty. It's rare that I have to raise the mic, so I'm just going to take advantage of it publicly now. Good evening. Thank you very much for this opportunity to provide you all with an update on what we've been working on in library and technology. As Dr. Quaranty said, before I begin, I have some colleagues here behind me which I'd like to introduce. I have curriculum coordinators here with me who are integral in the work that we're doing and will be available afterwards if you have any questions, specific questions about the curricular content. I also want to take some time to thank the teachers and the ICT team members who've done the work of planning, integrating, and delivering, and then also reflecting on the instruction that I will share with you this evening. With that in mind, I thought it would be very helpful to frame the update using the New Canaan Public Schools' goals as a reference point to help illustrate our work and how our work is connected to these principles. So if I start, first I'd like to focus our efforts on this one, continuing to provide professional learning opportunities for all staff. And here I put together a slide which shows some of the key professional learning initiatives that we've been engaged in this year across the different levels, elementary, Saks, and the high school. Starting with the elementary, we have really two main focus areas. First, we've had a primary focus has been on building a learning and leadership team in the area of technology. Building-based technology teams have been a priority for us, and we've been working very hard to bring teachers into a conversation where we have them part of setting the goals for our buildings and then having conversations across buildings moving forward. In addition, in an ideal world, we see the role of an elementary librarian and technology integrator as having the opportunity to provide both direct instruction and some flexibility to work collaboratively with teachers in the classroom or in the library. So in an effort to try to really work towards that, this year, we've worked to create an opportunity to find ways to co-plan instruction, focusing specifically on second grade, and using this as an opportunity to pilot our work, to be able to share out that work with you all, and to really see how well we can take advantage of the opportunity to collaborate with classroom teachers. I'll speak more a little bit on that later. And of course, lastly, we continue to provide professional learning on a one-on-one basis, and you'll see that theme go across all the different levels. In the middle school, collaborative training with curriculum coordinators has really been a key focus for us. As you know, by providing carts of Chromebooks in the liberal arts classrooms and then providing us, because of that resource, the opportunity to redistribute existing resources into other areas, we've been provided with a fantastic opportunity to work very closely with our curriculum coordinators, to identify where we can integrate technology into existing units of study, and to discuss what types of training teachers would need to be successful in leveraging the resources that they have at hand now. Also, as a part of that, we have been working to reinstitute the Saks technology team with the similar focuses of what I mentioned at the elementary level as well. At the high school, efforts in professional support and learning start with the collaboration with department chairs to provide needs-based professional development and also feedback from the department chairs themselves as to what they feel they need and their teachers need to provide instruction to the students. As you may know, personalized learning is a focus for teachers at New Canaan High School this year. To support this, the ICT department, ICT team, has developed professional learning experiences in this area of personalization, and which in itself was differentiated for teachers, and I'll go into that a little bit more a little later. So just to provide you a snapshot here to help illustrate the type of work that's occurring, what you see up here is one of the first TLC, Technology Leadership Committee meetings at East School. These meetings are led by the technology integrator and the librarian, but it's also at, they're monthly, and they're led by, there's a strong cross-section of staff, both certified teachers and classified teachers who participate in this. We have high-level users of technology, but also people who are new to using technology and are looking for support to integrate technology into the classroom environment. And our focus is really on the learning that's going on in the classroom and how technology can support that, okay? Before we ever started these conversations, we worked very closely to develop a vision and a mission which was shared out with the teachers, so the teachers understand where their work is pointing towards, to make sure that they understand it's not just about the technology, but it's about the learning. At Saks, as I said before, with the arrival of over 700 Chromebooks, we saw a need to revive the Saks technology team with a goal of engaging teachers in shaping the plan for utilizing technology to transform learning for students. What follows are some slides that were used for a kickoff presentation for staff. So as you can see here, similar to what I talked about for the elementary folks, there's a clear statement of what the mission and the vision is for this team, okay? Giving teachers the platform, the opportunity to help shape the use of the technology, but also communicating to them that they, the teachers, are an essential link in connecting the district goals with the work that's going on in the classroom. So you see the, I got ahead of myself there, sorry. So in addition, another slide was just emphasizing that it's not about how we use the technology, which I think is, continues to be a shift for many people. It's about how the technology is used to support the learning and teaching. How do I use a tool to communicate? How can I be more efficient as a learner? How can I share this with different groups, what I know with different groups of people, et cetera? So what we have here is a snapshot of a professional learning session which was developed by the high school ICT team in February, focusing on personalized learning. Now, I'm just going to click on this link. What we have here, this takes you to the annex, which is a resource, which is a part of the NCHS page. So here is an example of the professional learning that was planned for teachers, by teachers at NCHS, okay? Since personalized learning was the main focus, we thought, what better way to bring home the message of personalization than by creating a professional learning session where teachers had choice? They were given the opportunity to choose from a variety of different topics related to how you can personalize the learning experience for your students. They selected that in well in advance. They were, those responses were then grouped, and a day's worth of collaborative learning where teachers met across the departments was arranged. I'm just going to scroll down here. So even if you look here, you see two social studies teachers with a department chair from science, an English teacher and a foreign language teacher. This is one of the sessions where they're sitting together and they're talking about a specific topic on personalizing learning. Let me show you what they were, one of the things they may have been talking about. So for each of these different areas of personalization, a landing page was created where they were given some topics which they can talk about, which you see on the left-hand side. There was some type of video or audio which they would listen to and then talk about related to those central, those essential questions. And then on the right-hand side, there was an, there was a resource that they could use, a type of technology which is available for them to use within the classroom to help them collaborate, to help them reflect on their work or share their thinking, okay? So in addition with that, there was, we created a very clear link to the TEPAL framework so that teachers understood the connection between personalization of learning and our effective teaching framework, which we worked so hard to create, okay? We feel like this is a really rich, robust resource that offered a fantastic day of choice for teachers. It also, as you can see, it's still up. It still is available for professional learning, for PLC groups, for departments to use, and we continue to hope to use that as a launchpad for further conversations with teachers throughout the rest of the year. If we look at another objective, to support teachers in the implementation of technology-rich classroom experiences at Saks Middle School. Before I dig into some of the details, I'd just like to take a moment to thank the Board of Education for their generosity and their dedication to supporting the integration and use of technology in the classroom. In addition to that, the dedication of the PTC, the Saks PTC, to round out that goal of trying to make sure that we provide those resources for those liberal arts classrooms in the form of Chromebooks. We're very fortunate for the support of both the board and the PTC, and I think you'll be very impressed with the work that we'll share and how those resources have been put to good use. So if we start with English, in this area, I'd like to highlight some units of study where we have incorporated technology in some meaningful ways. In fifth grade, we have a drawing conclusions unit, all right? And here, teachers created NearPods, which were, which they had in their classrooms, and they are, it's a, it's an online software where students are able to proceed through a variety of different tasks and experiences independently, okay? Just let me show you, share one with you right now. So what you see here, we have, just simply have snapshots now. It's not this static, it's interactive, but the best way for me to display it for you right now is in this form. So this one is focusing on referring, and the student is able to proceed through this experience independently. And this provides the teacher an opportunity to give the students this activity, this learning experience, and then have a more flexible classroom environment where the teacher may be able to pull a small group of students to confer with them, okay? May also be able to work with those students who are working on NearPod. It creates flexibility for the students so that they, so that the teacher can address some of the other learning objectives that they're trying to get at throughout the course of that unit study. So as you see out, as you see here, they're given a task, here, looking at a specific text, and then they can draw it, and they can actually edit that, work with that text, and then submit their work for review by the teacher. And the teacher will see the submissions of individuals and then the entire class on a dashboard. That teacher can provide feedback and use that information to further inform her instruction This is another NearPod, which we, historical fiction. We started small with these experiences, and last year, one of our technology integrators worked with Sarah Ross to work with a small group of teachers, one or two teachers, to see whether this experience of creating these independent NearPod experiences would work well. We felt like it was very successful, so then we started to broaden it and provide it to more fifth-grade teachers. It just provides greater flexibility for the teacher in the classroom. In sixth grade, let me go back to this person set it up a little bit. In sixth grade, students are, the unit was information magazine, it was an information magazine. Individual students were charged with creating a news article. Those news articles were brought together, similar types of news articles were collected to create an e-magazine, okay? Those, those resources were, that were, were then also put onto a website, which is not for public consumption, but is simply available for review here, so that the students that created those magazines had an authentic audience within Saks to see, to review their work, to provide feedback. So in this case, so this is a online magazine about humans and the human condition. It's called CLEAK. I'm not sure why it's called CLEAK, but I sort of like the name of it here. This is the cover page. Here's an article by one student, life within language. This is their cover page. And then here's their news article. And so what you have here with this, you have an e-magazine, okay? That magazine was then put onto the website through, with collaboration with the technology integrators, it can be shared out to a broader audience, okay? So I'm sure you're all familiar with TED Talks. Well, TED Talks follow a specific format, okay? And within this unit of study here in grade seven with multimedia TED Talks on perseverance, students were expected to communicate their, their learning and really focusing on speaking and listening standards, communication standards, and these are standards which exist not only in language arts, but also in information and communication technology as well, okay? Students studied the types of TED, variety of TED Talks, they engaged in research, and then they presented their research. In this case, students were, as you know about TED Talks, you have the slideshow behind you, you speak to the slideshow, okay? Keep that in mind as we progress to the conversation about what you see in eighth grade, okay? So just to give you an example of one or two, this is one student's TED Talk on perseverance and Lucio Ball. And again, there are conversations about, we're having conversations with students about, well, what are you selecting to put in there? How do the images that you're selecting help convey the message of your talk? All right. Pick one or two others. So then when we move to eighth grade, and we focus on learning through multiple perspectives and presenting it effectively, again, there's the piece of how are we presenting what we know, okay? Communicating the knowledge which we acquire. In this case, students were, created a presentation which had to be a standalone presentation. They could not narrate it, they could not, they could not, they could not explain it. The presentation had to address the essential question, how does learning information through multiple perspectives or genres impact one's understanding of an event or time period, okay? I just have one example for you here. So here, the student presents the essential question, topical questions and some understandings. So here, if you're like me, you're not only looking at the contents of the word box, you're also looking at the image, and the image is conveying some, some message to you as well. So conversations we have, not just in the middle school, but the high schools, okay? So how, as somebody who is sharing out your learning, how are you carefully selecting images, sound, to support the text, to support the message that you want to convey to your, to your audience? Maybe I'll end with that one, right? So those are some examples of how we've been supporting student learning in English. I want you to notice that when, in referring to things like Google Slides or Adobe Spark, it's an anecdote, it's an aphropos, it's not the first part we're talking about. We're talking about the learning, okay? So as a bit of a different perspective, I wanted to take some, show you some examples of how technology is being used in social studies. So as I go through these pictures, I don't want you to think that this is how social studies is using technology and that it's different than how it's being used in any other curricular areas like language arts. It's simply just a different way of showing how technology is being used. Or in social studies, the conversations with the teachers and the curriculum coordinators start with technology playgrounds, opportunities for the teachers to sort of get their hands dirty with the curriculum coordinators, with technology integrators and librarians, looking at some resources before they, before they implement it or integrate it into a unit of study. And then the question, the conversation is, how does this fit? How does this, can this support the work that we're doing, okay? So there've been a variety of them, as I listed a couple of technology playgrounds that we've had since the beginning of the year, okay? But in the classroom, the technology really serves these purposes. It serves collaboration, okay? And if you look there, you'll see that the laptops at the left, there's a piece of paper at the right and a pencil, okay? It's not just technology or just paper pencil. Very often, it's both, and sometimes it's just paper pencil and not technology, all Technology serves academic conversations. It provides students a platform to listen to their peers, to collect information, for example, in this case, a fishbowl, and to coach and provide feedback to peers in a way which is constructive, okay? Students can think carefully about the answers that they're going, or the feedback they're going to give to their peers, because they're not just raising their hand and sharing it out, but they're actually typing it into a document, which causes, gives you a little bit more time to reflect, right? And then, and then we share it out, they can share it out and have a really constructive feedback conversation with peers. So in addition, a lot of the work they're doing is trying to source data, looking at maps, charts, a variety of historical documents, and looking at ways that they can integrate that information into the work that they're doing, okay? So this is sort of a day in the life, a snapshot of how you might see it, see technology being used through that lens. In science, fifth grade, now, so I want to make sure, so now we move to talk about science and math a little bit, and they have the reallocated resources of the PCs and the iPads that we were able to redistribute and use very powerfully now that we have the Chromebooks really supporting the liberal arts focus at Saks, okay? And what we have is, in sciences especially, we're using a variety of different platforms because not one platform fits every learning need, okay? In fifth grade, they're using STEM cards, STEM cards to code robots. I'll show you a picture in a minute, which I think is really great, where they're using Vernier probes to gather data, to organize that data in sixth grade, looking at large amounts of data in spreadsheets and then trying to make sense of it as scientists, all right? And the great thing about that is you're going to see a picture where the tech integrators are right there, learning right next to the teachers, okay? But what's beautiful is that the tech integrators are looking at this experience through their lens, and the teacher is looking at this experience from their lens as an educator, and then how do we come together and help each other for students? And then, of course, simulations play in a very important part, a consistent part of the work that we do in science. It's the way that we test out our thinking and we build our understandings. So this was a recent professional learning session, and those are the tech integrators? Those are the teachers, okay? And we're all, we're all building our understanding of the resource itself, but for example, Mr. McLeod and Mr. Petracopoulos are really thinking about, okay, how, what's the data I'm getting out of this probe and how can it be organized within spreadsheets? What's the kind of information that students might want to get out of these spreadsheets, okay? And thinking about how they want, and having conversations with teachers about what do they want students to be doing with this data, and how can we work together to help students be successful? And here's students taking some, I'm getting ahead of myself here, some data about their, they're trouts, they're trout, they're tracking trout in tanks, and so they are, they're actually, this is the data that they have. The majority of students, many students haven't used these spreadsheets before, so it's a new experience for them, okay? So in math, the technology really helps, the focus has been trying to help students show and explain their thinking, all right? Also helping students manipulate data and represent it in real time. In this case here, this is another NearPod where students are able to show their work, okay? They submit it to the classroom teacher. As I said before, the teacher sees the student work on this dashboard here, can take any one of those, splash it up on the screen, use it as an exemplar, and really have the students walk peers through their thinking. Perhaps they found a unique or different way to solve a problem, this is a great learning opportunity, and technology really helps shorten the amount of time that it takes for the teacher to find those opportunities to highlight good work and also to provide students And just to wrap up this piece, you know, everyday applications, you can see them there. The feedback is important, the really, the real-time immediate feedback has been something I've heard pretty consistently from teachers and from curriculum coordinators. I did put in yellow and bold, we do very carefully manage the amount of screen time that we, we have students, we put out there for students. We, we ask the question, teachers are asking the questions in their department meetings, do we need to use the technology for this? This is the right way to use technology. And we will continue to get better at asking and answering those questions the more we do it, okay? So here, if we're looking at implementing, is another objective of implementing best practices regarding library media and technology scheduling at the elementary schools and Learning Commons district-wide. I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, a little bit more about the work that we've been doing at the elementary level, okay? As I said at the beginning of the year, we were able to bring a whole host of people together. It takes a lot of people to create building-based schedules, so we brought a whole host of people together to, with the priority of trying to find a slice of time where the elementary TIs and librarians would be able to connect with A-grade level to support their work, both in the classroom, okay, in a more flexible way, not just to sort of where you drop your students off to the library or the computer area, but rather have the flexibility to work with them in the classroom on specific units of study. Through this conversation, we identified- Through this conversation, we identified an opportunity for librarians to really hook in with time, the reading time in second grade and for tech integrators to really connect with the writing aspect in second grade. And this made good sense too, because in writing very much, it's about, it's about production, it's about what are you sharing out and the conversation about, well, how are you sharing it out? What's your audience? And how does that impact the way that you're going to, you're going to write something, okay? Do you need to write it? Can you, can you create a video, et cetera, those types of things? In reading, very often, it's how are we looking at the text, making sense of the text, how are we gathering information through research? What we did after we had done that, after we were able to find that time, we sat down with curriculum coordinators, Joanne Schulman and Karen Scalzo, and started to look, the first thing we did was we looked at their units of study and said, where do you need our support? Where can we help teachers? And we identified three experiences, I have them up there, three opportunities. In the fall, we started out with really helping teachers with identifying specific text, students help identify specific text features. Right now, we're supporting students in the production of book reviews and those book reviews are designed and created with a specific audience in mind. So the students have to create their book review to make sure that it aligns with the audience that they're, that's been selected, okay? And then we have an upcoming research project in the springtime, a little bit later on. So, these are three snapshots of a PL session in the fall. And I forgot to put the arrows in here and I wish I did, but, so those are snapshots of second grade teachers and ICC staff from east, west and south. And this is, as far as I know, this is the first time where they've ever had the opportunity to sit down, looking at one of their units of study and say, how can we integrate and support the work that you need to, you, that you need to do? And so on that day, on that morning, they sat down together, the teachers gave my team feedback, this is how we need your help and then, they, and then they worked together to, to plan out, to map out how they would end up collaborating, where the technology integrator would be in the classroom till you co-teach a lesson, okay? Or something to, you know, something along those lines. That was, that project was a really good, was a, an intersection between language arts and social studies. So they, the technology integrators created a web quest for students to give them the opportunity to look at online resources, something that second graders have not had a lot of opportunities to do yet. They would look at online resources and then had to take notes from them and make sense of the information they saw online, okay? So again, it's, I'm trying to show you that balance of how we utilize the technology, but we do have to take it, make sense of it, okay? And in this case, they were using, they were jotting down their notes in that format. I would say, so, and now currently, they're engaged in a book review. And so here, that, to the left is a picture of a second grade classroom, that is the technology integrator, that's the classroom teacher, and those are students using technology. I, I just think that's a really, it's a, it's a powerful thing to show right there. So, the way that you have those two adults in the classroom, they have a clear understanding of what the learning focus is, they're, they're able to work with students clearly. Mr. Poli there to the left is, is working with a couple of students and supporting them. And then here's a little sample of a book review that a student would do.
Hey, do you like funny, magical character books? Well then, this is the book for you. In Leonardo the Terrible Monster, Leonardo wants to be scary, but he can't, he tries everything, but, but it doesn't work. All his friends are scary and terrifying, Leonardo researches for scaredy cats. Will he find scaredy cats? Find out in the book. I recommend this book if you like friendship books. My favorite part is when Leonardo researches for scaredy cats.
Got to work on her rate of speech, I think, but aside from that, she did a beautiful So those, again, those are some examples of how we're trying to support learning here. Just to my last point here, talking about one of those focus points within the district goals was to make a recommendation on a learning management system, which would serve to enhance communication and learning across the district K-12. I'd like to give you an update on the work that we've done on that. First, just to, to refresh you all on what, what is a learning management system, okay? You know, a learning management system is a piece of software where, you know, it provides a, a structured, safe environment where we, a teacher can create an entire course and include all of their resources, their homework assignments, digital resources, et cetera, and provide, provide a sort of a one-stop shop, is what I like to call it, for not just students, but also a one-stop-shop resource for parents as well. Some of the feedback that we've heard from districts that are using a LMS is that students and parents appreciate a learning management, learning management system because it creates clarity for parents as to what their child is supposed to be doing, what it is they are doing, or maybe sometimes aren't doing. And also for students, because they don't wonder about what platform teacher A is using versus teacher B. From an institutional side, it provides an opportunity for us to put our curriculum into one area, which is easily accessed by teachers, by departments. It also allows us an opportunity to create assessments, which can be delivered in a variety of ways, much more interactive than some of the ways that we're delivering them now. It also provides out ways where we can actually, you know, evaluate the assessments, sorry, where, where again, we can provide more immediate feedback to students. So let me give you a quick update as to where we are. So, and I can't read that myself, I apologize, so I'm going to go back to my notes. So, in the fall of 2017, a learning management subcommittee was charged with, I'm sorry, I have to, sorry. I need bifocals, but I don't want them. They're charged with investigating possible K-12 LMS solutions from a broad field of options, okay? And that team developed a whole set of questions where they went out and they looked far afield as to what are the option, what are the K-12 learning management system options that are out there? Bless you. They came back to the, to us in the spring and the subcommittee has shared out their findings, they shared out their findings and they recommended five for serious consideration. The fall of this year, we broadened that subcommittee to include a series of teachers, administrators, curriculum coordinators, and we had that team, we gave them a presentation of those five different options so that they could see what each option does. And then from there, they made recommendations as to how we need to proceed to make an educated decision, okay? In the winter, the subcommittee identified one clear preferred solution. They also said that we needed to have a conversation with other school districts that are using that solution to get feedback from them. And it happened, just so happens that Greenwich and Westport are using those solutions and I have just some feedback from them, which I'd like to share with you as well. Based on the, all of this, there was a recommendation, as I'm sure you are aware, to include, to pursue an LMS solution for the 18, 19 school year. When talking with Westport, I won't read through all of this, but you'll see some of the strengths that they, they cited were, you know, they can, the parents and students can see a full view of all their classes, Google resources, which are really valuable and we would not consider abandoning those resources, they are well-integrated into this learning management system. So Google Docs, the Drive, et cetera, it is married into, it can be married into this management system, okay? In the, so, and then also the, the opportunity to create a variety of assessments, which, which helps the teacher and allows them to, to just make sure that they have, they continue to get progress monitoring feedback from students. When we spoke with Greenwich, some of their feedback was that it was very useful when trying to map out the K-12 curriculum, as I mentioned before, making sure that there's instructional clarity for everybody that's trying to teach our students. It's a fantastic curriculum curation tool and a repository. And, and another piece that they, another piece of feedback which they said, which was important for us to keep in mind were two things. One was, we need to make sure that we, piloting, they piloted this first and they said piloting was a very good way to go. That, that allowed them to get a good sense of what teachers needed, okay, the type of support they needed to be able to provide teachers in a, when they eventually moved to a broader rollout. And they also said, don't rush the professional learning that you need to provide teachers. They said it takes about six hours worth of professional learning for teachers to become proficient in this. They followed a, a teach-the-teachers model, which is a great model, but they said that really helped make the difference on top of the pilot for the success of the use of this learning management tool, okay? So, you know, those, that's my overview for you right now, really. I, I have to say, I was wrapping it all up and I shot an email to my team, I was very, I'm very impressed with the work that they've engaged in over the course of this year. I think sometimes when you're looking at it very close, you don't see the breadth of the work that's occurring. I want to go back to where I started. That success does not occur without the constant conversations with people that know the curriculum best, the curriculum coordinators, Dr. Corente and their guidance is to, some strategic approaches to things, and also the teachers that are delivering the instruction on a day-to-day basis. So, so at this, I'm, at this point in time, I'm going to wrap up and I'm going to ask, I'm going to put the curriculum coordinators on the spot a little bit, if you could come on up and sit up here. So, that's what I was told to do. So, there are only two chairs, so don't rush up. Unless, unless, are there any questions first?
Yeah. Okay. So, well, thank you, Mr. Salvastriani.
You're welcome.
It's helpful. I was, you know, this learning management system, I, I've been really watching anxiously as a parent who will no longer benefit from it. I think it's, you know, something that is, parents will really appreciate, you know, having the one platform and I think it'll be easier for students to, to be able to just be able to see what, what they have and go to one place. Does anyone have any questions or things they'd like to ask Mr. Salvastriani or his team? How about the, Katrina?
Just, first I have a comment, thank you for that presentation. I, I just am very impressed by, just in such a short amount of time, the collaborative learning that's taking place between teachers, between students and then among the whole group. It's really, I think, exciting for the district. I'm also really impressed by the opportunity for our students to advance their oral communication skills. There's just so many more opportunities to speak, record and, you know, they're just, I think it's really exciting for these kids and it's really, you know, up-to-date skills that they're going to need as they grow and enter the working world. The data analysis as well and the opportunity to use spreadsheets and learn different, you know, techniques, I think is exciting as well. My question, I have two questions. The first is around keyboarding skills. What, what are you learning and is there an age where they, do they need to learn it? Do they just figure it out? That's my first question. And my second question is around student engagement. Do you have any data or evidence on student engagement in terms of more student engagement, increased interest level in different subject areas or?
I'll start with the second question first. We have not targeted, asked that question yet to try to gather feedback. I think that's a great question, we should, we should look into, you know, are students telling us that they feel more engaged because they have the devices available? That's, that's a good question, we should look into that. As for keyboarding, we have keyboarding, direct instruction of keyboarding, it's K through four and then in fifth grade, they have the option of really practicing independently, all right? We find that there are students, we feel like they need to be provided with the direct instruction of keyboarding, especially at the primary level. And, and it's not just keyboarding, it's also the understanding of how to navigate with the mouse, how to use a keypad, because we're seeing also that there, there are some expectations regarding some standardized assessments and how students would interact with those devices, where it's more than just being able to find ASDF, right? So we're, are, we've, you know, we've, we're learning about that, we've had conversations with building administrators where they've come into the, we've, we've been in a part of the conversation where we've looked at test results and, and we've, and some of the feedback has been, how can we help students be more comfortable scrolling through text that doesn't fit on what the screen? And being able to go, and if they have to find two or three pieces of evidence within a piece of text, how do they make sure they don't lose their place and how do they highlight it and keep it so they can reference it when they do have to write a response? So, I'm not sure I answered just your keyboarding question, but we're realizing that the expectation of what we need to teach students explicitly is more than just the keyboarding piece.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hazel?
Thank you for this presentation. It's very helpful to see all the different things that you're doing and how exciting for the kids to be able to do it at the ages they're doing it. I had a question to ask about, as this, as it builds and builds, you've already sent students to college and jobs and I'm sure they've been very successful at what they've done, but just keeping track of some of that information of after they've graduated, especially keeping up with the colleges and to see what their expectation is, I would think would be interesting as you're deciding how to go on various projects. And I know that I would be interested in what you find and, and how it works. It looks as, it looks as if a lot of it already meshes, but if it doesn't, I know you all be spitting, spitting and putting it together.
Yeah, I, I think that's a great idea, trying to get feedback from graduates as to how prepared they feel that they are moving into college.
In the job world as well as the college, both. Thank you.
Okay. Maria?
Two things, what will you do with like D education? Will that go away or will that, if this learning management system has a portfolio feature?
If it has, if it has a what feature?
A portfolio feature in D education, in the learning management system, would D education then, would we save money on that by, would that go away?
I think that's a conversation I would need to have with VPA. It's, D education is a very robust portfolio system and it's, I think it's a conversation with Mr. Sneeth and his team about what are they expecting that, what does that portfolio do for them? Can that be replicated with what is being offered by something like School-A-G or an LMS? I, I haven't gone down that road far enough yet to be able to say we could do that, but I wouldn't want to compromise a very powerful digital resource portfolio for, in VPA, just, I would want to make sure all their needs are being met as well.
And just to talk about screen time, I know a lot of parents would prefer less screen time and especially the younger grades, because the kids are on, even when they leave school. Would you, or keep in mind some kind of tech-free day or something? I'm sure there'll be days where the kids are on a tech device in every class and some days where maybe they're just on few devices, but just an idea, a tech-free day.
Great, I could, I appreciate that.
Okay. Sherry?
So, I, I just wanted to follow up and talk a little bit more about the, how you measure the impact. And you talked about how you've been inquiring about the amount of screen time with the teachers, but more specifically, like, how do you measure the impact that a teacher's having in integrating technology to support the learning? So, I'm assuming that there's probably some correlation with some teachers who are more tech savvy, who are going to integrate more and other teachers who aren't as comfortable with the technology may integrate less. So how do we kind of try to put a measurement around that to make sure that we are in fact effectively utilizing the technology?
I think from my point of view, it comes down to, how is the technology helping reshape the learning that students are engaged in, okay? We talk about, is technology really transforming the learning, okay? And, and again, I think that there are lots of important conversations that we need to have about, okay, so what does it mean to transform learning from this to that? about, okay, so what does it mean to transform learning from this to that? Okay? But I think the metric that we're hoping to be able to use is, how is this experience providing a fundamentally richer or more rigorous experience for students than if they didn't have the device available to them? Okay? And there are certain examples that are really low-frank hanging fruit. For example, if I, without certain technology, if I couldn't collaborate with somebody and have a, if I could Skype with somebody in France, just to use an example, then, you know, that's, the opportunity to do so is transformative. It is, it does create a different, fundamentally different type of learning experience than if I didn't have it. Those are the metrics that I talk about when I talk with my team about how can we really gauge the change that we're supporting. I don't.
Sarah, do you want to add in?
I thought maybe I could add on to that. Excuse me. Mr. Salvastrelli talked about in fifth grade how we were piloting some of the different resources. So, specifically this past year, we had some teachers piloting NearPod and looking at our information unit, having some questions that were sent to an authentic audience of third graders. And those were teachers who were working closely with the TIs, the tech integrators, but they were following the same curriculum. They were just using different tools. And so, we come together in data teams on a frequent basis, and we can look at that and look at the student engagement and how our students are more engaged or more interested in that, and how that transforms into student learning. Another thing that I just wanted to add in terms of engagement, I also have some teachers who are very well-equipped with using Google. They have the Chromebooks in their classroom all the time. Sometimes it's just a simple survey that they're taking at the beginning or the end of each period or the end of each week, and then the teachers are using that as formative information in order to change their instruction for the next week. So, that can be as simple as a two-minute, did you like or did you not like this unit? Did, you know, on a scale of one to five? Or it could be an open-ended response where students are explaining what they did or didn't like, and then that's shaping some of the work that they're doing. Much of the, of our curriculum is working in student choice and allowing students to research and write about topics of interest to them, and the internet, well, the platforms that we're using allow a lot of that independence and transfer.
Thank you.
I think I would just briefly add to, to those thorough answers, that the differentiated professional learning that's being provided to staff, I think helps with that as well. I think that instead of trying to deliver lessons that are one-size-fit-all to staff, by allowing them to choose at their level of competency, it helps to ensure that everybody is growing in their understanding of and use of the, you know, technology for learning. So, I think that helps to increase the capacity of all staff, so that you don't have the larger gaps for instructional practice and the use of technology, because teachers are able to self-select into courses and other learning opportunities to help to build their understanding and increase their ability to do this. So, I think that helps to solve for that problem that years ago did exist, where people who had more skill with technology might use it more often, those without it would use it less often, the professional learning communities that exist, and the differentiated learning experiences that teachers are provided. I think both of those things work to make more assured experiences for students in classrooms.
Penny?
So, I was just actually wondering if you could speak a little bit more about how we're using technology to build just sustained reading comprehension. I know there have been some studies that show, you know, that when you read on a screen, you read a little bit differently. I know from personal experience, and I, a lot, clearly, I was trained in a different era, there are sometimes when it's a really thick document that I just do much better if I have the physical document, I can print and go back and forth through it. And so, what are we seeing in terms of students and, you know, the technology and being able to, you know, build, I guess, long-term reading comprehension and attention span?
Call Sarah back up for that.
Okay, there's, there's a lot of research being done currently on the screen reading and how that impacts reading comprehension and understanding. So, we try to balance the two approaches together. A lot of the research that's coming out is talking about how readers are on the computer often skimmers, skimmers and scanners. You can think about all those apps that are out there that intend, that are intended to shorten something very quickly, and as a result, it can impact stamina as a reader, which therefore impacts comprehension. So, a lot of what we're talking about with teachers is balancing the screen reading with the reading in front of them and teaching students the skills and strategies that they need in order to be effective readers. Mr. Salvastrelli, when he pulled that fifth grade historical fiction NearPod up, there's a, a nonfiction sample there. The beauty of NearPod is it allows you to annotate on the screen, and so, if I want to read something and really invest in it, I want the printed copy and I take notes on the side, because that's how I learned to do it. We are teaching our students to annotate because we want them to be transactive readers with the text. And sometimes on the screen, that all goes out the window, because they're skimming, they're kind of jumping from screen to screen. So, tools like NearPod, some of the other tools that we've used have really helped to focus the kids and show that thinking on the screen, so that we can show them that when you get onto a computer, you're still using the same skills and strategies, and you have to take your time and energy to do that. But we're also building that with the print media, because we don't just want our students on screens. We want them to also be practicing effective reading on all sorts of devices. I'm not sure that I fully answered your question in terms of the effective reading comprehension, but we are building experiences around it.
I guess what I'm wondering is, are there techniques that we can use to teach students how to read on screens, so they're not skimmers and that they actually are, you know, maybe that's something that you more naturally do on a screen, and that we can actually teach them, no, you need to slow down. I mean, I used to do it with the highlighter.
Sure.
That was very, very, that, you know, that sort of helped me.
Yeah, and it's about matching the reader to the tool. So, there are many opportunities, even the iPad Pro has some, where you can make the notes right on there. It's really about, it's about making the child stop and have that interactive transaction with the text. So, stopping to use their reading strategies to figure out, you know, clarify understandings, to create those summaries, so they're not just jumping around and moving on, and holding them accountable for that as well.
Okay. Good. Anyone else? Any more questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Salvastrelli. Appreciate, this is a great presentation.
Excellent.
All right. Moving on to the school calendar discussion with Dr. Lettsie.
Yes.
On everyone's mind.
Yeah. In the hopes that we're not going to regret having this discussion after Wednesday, but thought better to have it sooner rather than later. The, in the pile of papers that you have there, you'll see a letter from the State Board of Education and our school calendar. And I just want to take an opportunity, you'll see we have an action item to establish the last day of school. We are not yet able to establish our graduation date, because that, by statute, we cannot establish until April 1st. So, it's after April that we can do that. But there is a decision for the Board of Education to make, given, well, we came into March with two snow days, and I was feeling very good about that. At this point in March, we've had six, as most of you are well-aware, just given the storm that we had, where we had to close for the three days, and then last week on Tuesday. As you know, the Board of Education has a calendar, a student calendar of 182 days, and the state requires us to do 180 days. So, the sixth cancellation puts the Board of Education in conflict with a policy on the last day of school. So, the last day of school by policy can be, the latest it can be is the end of the third full week in June. And that puts us to, I just have to find my calendar here to use exactly the date, the 22nd, puts us to June 22nd. June 22nd is the student's 181st day. So, the decision point here for the Board of Ed is to decide to either reduce the number of student days from 182 days to 181 days, or to use a day from the April vacation to go to 182 days. My recommendation is, in the past, when this has occurred, it doesn't happen often, but when it has, the Board of Education has reduced the number of student days to 181, with the understanding that our staff would still do 182 days, so that would turn into a professional learning day for staff, would be that Monday instead. The, if we were to have another day, there could be another discussion around going to 180 days, which boards have done in the past. Believe it or not, my weather update this morning said that if we do have a storm on Wednesday, and they're anticipating we will, it may not be the last storm of the year, that there are one or two more storms in the making that we don't know about. So, it's going to be a stay tuned thing, and if the Board doesn't want to take action tonight, that's certainly fine, but I did want to just have the opportunity to share with you, sort of the state statute around this, that it is a minimum of 180 days, cannot make up the days on Saturdays or Sundays. The, in the past, if we've had to use more than the two, if we had to reduce more than those two days to go to 180, then the days would come from April vacation, and typically it would come, at least in the past, it's come from the beginning of the vacation week, so that it would be, you know, starting with the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of that April vacation week. We, of course, I hesitate to do so unless we absolutely have to, because I do think families have plans for that time, and it's not great instructional time with kids. So, the, I guess the other thing to note is that students are not permitted to graduate prior to 180 days either, so that if this were the end and we, there were no more days and the Board of Ed decided that that Friday would be the last day, then it would be likely that the graduation date would be Thursday with a makeup date of the Friday, because that would be the 180th day. Let's see. So, I guess there is an action item here, if you would like to take action item, when we get to the action items, but I wanted to just to give you that, the history a little bit, so I'm understanding what the boards have done, and to make, give you my recommendation, which would be to reduce the number of days to 181, and still with the understanding that staff would be returning for that professional learning day on the 25th.
Thank you, Dr. Lettsie. I think every parent who either is watching or will hear about this appreciates the very thorough description, because I think everybody's been talking about it.
So, there's, there's another nuance, if you, if you don't mind bearing with me one more moment, as I look at Jill and I look at Mr. Egan. So, the storm is anticipated to begin at this point, and again, we're still far enough out, it can change, and we're all hoping it will. But if it were to do what's forecast to do at this point, it would begin at 4:00 a.m. on Wednesday morning, and looks like it would be a significant amount of snow that would go right through when students would be coming to school. That Wednesday is the statewide SAT day for our juniors. So, adds another bit of complexity to it all. The state has said that if we have a 90-minute delay, any schools with a 90-minute delay on that day can still hold their school day SAT program. However, if it's more than a 90-minute delay, then they cannot, they have to pack those materials up, send them back to Hartford, wherever they go, and then it would, the makeup would be April.
24th or 25th.
24th or 25th. So, that's just another complexity to it, that while it cannot influence our decision, because safety has to come first, the, if it were at all possible and recommended, I would look maybe to try to do a 90-minute delay on that day, which we haven't done in four or five years or so, because it is confusing, and we've tried to stay with a two-hour delay, but in this instance, if that were to be the case, but given the forecast I'm seeing today, and if that doesn't change, then the roads would be no safer at a 90-minute delay or two-hour, and, you know, it's always about having drivers on the road at the worst times. So, we're going to continue to monitor it. It's hard to believe when it's 45 degrees out today, but this is what's happening and what we're trying to deal with. So, the school day SAT, if it does have to get moved for this reason, then it would be April 24th or 25th. If there's a 90-minute delay and we still hold our SATs on that day, I know that Mr. Egan, Dr. Corente, and Mr. Sullivan are working out the details of that, and we'll have that communicated home to everybody tomorrow.
All right. Thank you.
Does that count then towards the 181, 181 days?
If we held the school day SAT, if there was a 90-minute delay, it would count.
Yeah, because probably the other kids would not come in, would they still, well, I guess.
We were, that's what we have to try to work out. School would still be open for, you know, all the other grades as well. We're trying to work out what would happen with the ninth, 10th, and the 12th graders were scheduled to come in, so it's really that ninth and 10th grade. And we have to work out those details, and we'll have to communicate that. Yeah.
Yeah. So, is the June 22nd date, is that, is that state, or is that just our board that made that, like, the third Friday? Is that?
Yep. So, that's a Board of Education policy.
Just because I had a parent ask me, like, it's too long, and which it is.
The state is actually later.
The state is later.
According to the state, we can go right up till the end of June.
Oh, my gosh.
So, there are some districts now that are looking at Wednesday, June 27th, as their final day. And there, who knows what will happen after that, if we have a few more days. So, you know, the six days we have, it's, it's a lot of days, but there are some that have eight or nine days that they've had to cancel. So, yeah, you can, you have, the first thing you have to do is exhaust all of the days in June and, to get the 180 days in. If there's an extraordinary circumstance and you can't, and you've taken all of your vacations and all of your other days, then you can petition to state, but you can't do it until you've taken all of your other days. So, our Board of Education policy essentially would be trumped by that state law if we couldn't find another way to do 180 days by that end of the third week in June.
Okay.
The things you learn.
Yeah. There you go.
Any other questions or comments or? All right. So, we can, we can vote on that, and we'll maybe have to put another vote on next week's, next.
I'm hoping it's not hubris to have it on the agenda tonight.
Yeah. No, but I think that's very helpful, because it's been on every parent's mind. Everybody's already trying to schedule summer and.
It is, and so, it does, it can impact our summer programs a little bit, ESY and our summer programs and activities and camps that we have. So, we are carefully watching it, and we'll begin communication with parents in the community all throughout once, once we know. Now, as of April 1st, as soon as we have our first meeting in April and set the graduation date, it sounds crazy to say, but given that we're almost there, if there were another snowstorm or another cancellation, then you would not have to move your graduation date. So, that, once that gets set by the board in April, it would stay, but you would have to still do 180 days.
But we think right now, that's the 21st, is that what you said?
If nothing were to change right now.
If we don't, right.
Right. The 180th day would be June 21st.
Got it.
And we would look to put the graduation there, and then the June 22nd, which is the Friday, would be the makeup day. But that's if nothing else changed.
Really?
Which we're all.
So, the message is, don't make your plans yet, if you haven't.
And don't, don't sleep with your pajamas on inside out, and don't put a spoon under your pillow, and don't do any of that stuff, because we don't want it.
Yes, we want to go back to school. We want to be in school from here on out, if you want to get out early. Okay. All right. Thank you, Dr. Lettsie. Moving on to the budget update with Dr. Lettsie and the board.
And the board, sure. If, I'll just begin here, if you don't mind, and then open it up to discussion. As you know, it was two weeks ago that the board met, and we talked about the reductions that we were able to find as administrative team in the budget as proposed to the Board of Finances, Board of Finance, and we identified around $500,000, and that was shared with the Board of Finance that following night on Tuesday. The following week, the Board of Finance voted to reduce the Board of Education's budget request by $900,000. So, I just want to quickly, as a reminder, that $500,000 was primarily some savings in workers' comp premiums that we had, we were able to actualize. An increase in our estimated turnover savings year to year to 200,000. It was 100,000 already in the budget, so it was bringing that number up to 200,000. It was to defer the 10 maintenance projects that were in this budget for around 100,000. It was to reduce equipment throughout the district, and those things were classroom furniture, conference room table and chairs at Saks, the athletic scoreboard, the piano for VPA, some other things that, equipment replacements. It was, and in some savings that we anticipate through our printing, RFP that's going out, savings in ESY program through some program changes. Our, after Matt's wonderful presentation about the LMS, it was to shift the LMS to pilot instead of a full implementation. And it was to defer the media management system we talked about, it was a reduction in instructional material supplies. The Gallup recruitment tool we had talked about was being deferred, and then reduction in conferences and travel. So, all of those were the things we talked about at the last board meeting, which brought that to about 500,000. So, we've been working last week or so to identify possible areas for the additional $400,000 reduction to get to the 900,000 that the Board of Finance had requested. You know, we continue to look at every single item in the budget to try to identify areas that we can reduce. that we can reduce. You know, it's, we talk about trying not to impact program, but as Dr. Keating and I were, were recently talking about, you know, everything that we do is part of a program. You know, there's, there's, whether it's a maintenance program around facilities, or the VPA program or sort of things, or athletics, everything is, it is all programmatic. So it's, it's very challenging as we think about it in those terms. So some of the areas that we're looking at, and these are only possible areas for consideration around a, you know, to get to that $900,000, we're looking at some redeployment of staff through attrition. We're looking at some areas such in our VPA, extracurricular activities, athletics. For instance, in VPA, we're looking at the challenges in our program and other programs like that. In extracurricular, we're looking at some budgeted funds that we've used to offset some costs for students who participate in what we consider to be academically oriented extracurricular activities. We talk about like Model UN as a sort of a, an academic sport, and you know, we have those presentations each year where Paul and his team will come and share with us how they're doing. So there are some funds that help defray some transportation costs for students that are a part of that. Same with debate, same with students in the Quran. So that's another area that we may have to reduce, which would result in students paying more for their participation in those activities. We're looking at athletics, you know, the, we've talked already about the scoreboard as a possible area, but also looking at the, a couple of years ago, the Board of Ed approved funding to provide some resources for club sports, looking at that, reviewing and possibly reducing that funding appropriation. We also talked in great length about the alternative school program. And while I continue, and we all continue to believe it's the right idea, I think it's something that we have to look at, deferring, with the hope, of course, it'd be deferring it for a year, we'd be bringing it back, in the hope that the board's budget would have, you know, more support overall next year, as we look to, you know, bring that in at some point. Still think it's the right thing for our students, for our school system, and it's, you know, an attempt to try to prepare, you know, be proactive as we're doing it. Those are just some brief areas of consideration, but you know, if, if that, as you know, is part of the process now, we go before the town council tomorrow night, and if there is a further reduction to the board's budget, then we really have to shift our thinking from program reductions to try to save where we can, to program eliminations, you know, and so those decisions would have to be made by the whole board after knowing what that final budgetary number is. But the, you know, you have to sort of shift your decision-making and the lens that you use to look at savings based on kind of what that ultimate number is. I do just briefly want to share, you know, I've been seeing some feedback about the, well, the board, I know, has received some feedback about a perceived failing to cooperate with the Board of Finance's memo around a 2% target. And I just want to take a moment to say, I think it's, it's quite unfair to try to label the Board of Ed as uncooperative in this way or in any way. You know, had the board been invited to a discussion with the Board of Finance prior to the publication of the memo, the board could have shared with the Board of Finance that the cost drivers in the budget, primarily salary and insurance, comprise most of the increase that we're talking about here. Furthermore, the board could have shared that budgeting to a fixed number, especially when we're experiencing a negative trend in insurance claims, is detrimental to the entire program, and that the Board of Ed will be putting forward a budget focused on sustaining the excellence of the New Canaan Public Schools while resourcing a few high-leverage and low-cost items to help us respond to the current trends, and to proactively address some issues that we see coming, like the alternative program and other things like that. Finally, by having that conversation together, I think the Board of Ed could have demonstrated the fiscal prudence that I, that you've been practicing for years by reminding the Board of Finance that last year's budget was a 1.6% increase, you know, and by outlining some of the efforts that we regularly make to manage and reduce our costs here as a school district. The, you know, had that dialogue occurred, I think it would have been a cooperative process from the start. So I do think it's unfair to try to label the Board of Ed as uncooperative, when by not being invited in the process prior to the decision being made, you weren't given the opportunity to cooperate. You know, really, I think it was more around, it wasn't really cooperation, I think it's, the Board of Ed didn't concede to that. And I think that you should be praised for refusing to concede your responsibilities to the students, the parents, and staff, and the entire district and the entire town. I think that, you know, the, the process works best when folks, when each board kind of takes a different look at the budget to develop the best final product. And so with the Board of Education really focusing on what needs to come forward to sustain the excellence that we have, and again, try to leverage a few low-cost, high-impact areas to continually improve in our delivery to students and to the community, I think that that's, you're meeting your responsibility to all the stakeholders, and it reaches the best result. I do think also that there's a misconception of, that, that I've heard that the board doesn't focus on saving money or identifying efficiencies. And just a reminder, you know, Goal Five around stewardship has been in our, in the district goals for quite a while, and it's something that we take very, very seriously and work on all of the time. So what we've decided to do, at an upcoming meeting, we'll have something for the board to share with you around articulating some of the ways through the last couple of years that, you know, we have saved significant money for the district. And the challenge, of course, is when we say saved money, instead of spending 100,000 for something, maybe we're able to spend $50,000 on something. So it's really about kind of bending the curve on the expenses, but you're always going to have to pay for electricity, you're always going to have to pay to heat the buildings, always going to have to pay for those, for to drive the kids to school, you know, for the transportation. But we'll be able to show what could have been versus what is, based on some of the decisions that you've made as a board, and some of the, the great work that's come from our operations departments throughout. So we're hoping for the next Board of Education meeting to be able to articulate some of those specific areas for savings as well. And I think that, just finally, the, those great efforts that we've put forth in the last years and even before us, I think, really speak to, are probably the primary drivers as to why, over the last 10 years, in our demographic reference group in Derg A, you know, the New Canaan Public Schools, the growth of the budget for the New Canaan Public Schools is less than any other school district in our Derg over the last 10 years per pupil, but our performance continues to be at or near the very top, you know, throughout. So I think those efforts of the district to save money in a variety of different ways on large cost drivers and other things have really resulted in noticeable and, well, evidenced savings when we look at those per pupil expenditures, where we've grown slower than any of our other Derg A schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lutze, and, you know, I think it bears repeating. So we have the slowest, slowest growth in per pupil expenditures of any school in our Derg.
In the last 10 years.
In the last 10 years. Yet we're the top-performing school in our Derg in math, science, and language arts. And, and our per pupil expense is squarely in the middle of anyone else in our Derg. I, I just think that has gotten lost in this whole, you know, budget discussion, you know. So anyway, does anyone have anything they'd like to say? Brendan?
Yeah, so I appreciate all that, Brian. I thought that was well said. You know, a couple of things that are a little bit frustrating to me is that, you know, in particular, probably more than anything else, the alternative school typifies what we're trying to do, which is both, you know, meet our goals from an educational standpoint, and also, I think from the town perspective, from a cost perspective, over time, do something that just makes sense, that, you know, keeps more students in the town. Ultimately, although we may not be able to show it in the first year that the alternative school is created, ultimately, probably next year, meaning, you know, two years out, and certainly beyond that, you know, save money for the town. And yet, we're probably going to be forced to not do that, you know, simply because we need to meet a target for this year. So that's one, you know, one example, the learning, learning management system is probably another example of ultimately saving, saving money by not having teachers spending time, and us probably having to license other software to deliver the same possible services. Deferred maintenance, that's likely to, you know, we're going to be deferring maintenance this year, which is probably just going to lead to greater costs over time. So I really think, you know, as, as a town, we need to think longer term about what we're investing in, and what we're doing at the Board of Education is really investing in, you know, not only the, the students that we educate, but in our facilities, in our technology. And we really need to think beyond, you know, 12 months forward, you know, whether we're at 2% or 2.2% or 1.8%. We really need to think about, you know, what we're, you know, what our priorities are and what we're funding, and, you know, what it looks like three, four, or five years out, or even longer. I also think it's really important, you know, in light of what it takes to build the system that has been built in New Canaan over, you know, decades, it's a, it's a delicate balance of the right level of cost and structure and personnel, and to the extent you start, you know, pulling out little, you know, pieces of that through, through cost cuts, it's, you know, that's reasonable, right? There, there are pressures in terms of, you know, whether it's taxes or, you know, property or, or otherwise. And there's a, there's a point at which you can do that without, you know, major impacts to, to the school system, but it's, it's very delicate, and I get worried about, you know, to the extent that there's too much pressure and too much of a reduction that we're causing not just short-term pain, but long-term, you know, harm to the system that, again, has been, you know, painstakingly built over a long period of time, so.
Sherry?
So well said, Brendan, but, and just to add to that, I think it's disappointing that we're here, and knowing that the Board of Finance has already reduced the budget by 900,000, and we know the town council, I've heard preliminary discussions discussing further cuts. So I think to Brendan's point, you know, we, we did have a number of parents who came to the town council public hearing, which was nice to see their support. We had a few speak up, but I think my message would be to, to all of the stakeholders out there, parents, preschool parents, community members who value the excellence in education, that really they need to understand that the time is now, that they stand up and speak out for sustaining excellence in education and investing in education. I think, you know, I appreciate the thorough review, but when we're talking about poss, looking at possible reductions in things like challenge and arts and Model UN, debate, the Quran, club sports, those are things that define our school. They certainly have defined some of my own children's academic experiences, so it's, it's disheartening, it's disappointing. So I really, this is a call to action for people to really stand up and, and speak out for our, our school system, so.
Any other comments or questions? Penny?
So I agree with everything that Brendan and Sherry said, and I'm also just a little concerned, I was wondering if you could elucidate a little bit more, Dr. Lutze, about the redeployment of staff through attrition, because that sounds a little like it doesn't hurt that much, but, you know, I think that each staff member we have is specifically assigned to an important purpose, and if you could discuss a little, I know you don't like to go there, but I, I think that these cuts are, this is, these are going to be cuts into personnel and program, and I think that the town bodies, if they, if they vote for these, need to know exactly what they're doing to the school district.
Sure. So the challenge, of course, is that you have people who are currently working in the roles, right?
I understand that.
So the, what we'd be looking at, and it does depend upon what the attrition is, you know, as we look at it, we anticipate some changes here and there, but it would be folks that are in support positions for our students and our staff right now, that may be redeployed into, into other, other positions. The, it is, and programmatic in that all of these things are. The, well, I can't get into the, I can't get into the specifics, because it would be specific. And the, but the bottom line is that the program that we have and the, you know, the resources that we have are delivering the results that we're getting. And so to, the changes that we're talking about would reduce the level of service provided to students and to teachers in, well, in important ways. I don't know that I can go...
So, so to me, that sounds...
I don't want it to be a euphemism.
I understand it, but to me, I just, that sounds like it's a place I, we don't want to take the district. It sounds like we would be diminishing the level of instruction in the classroom. And, and what I've always loved about going in front of the town bodies in New Canaan is they push us, and they push us hard every single year to come up with the most cuts that we can, and still deliver as efficiently as we can a, a great education to each one of our students. And when I'm listening to resources coming out of the classroom, and having heard all the presentations, all the response to intervention that we do in the classroom, how we really allocate and try and use each student's time maximally, I'm afraid that that is really what we're beginning to trim away at. I've seen, you know, and, and I've looked at, having been on the board a while, I mean, you actually notice things. And we worked for a long time on getting the math scores and the English scores of the boys and the girls to be about the same in this district, because we noticed that there were differences. And we talked with the teachers, and we talked with the educational team, and said, what can we do, and go into it and figure it out, and go support each classroom as we want. And we were able to change that. And, you know, we also, you know, we've done that a couple of years ago, our scores, I think, in math at SAC, one of, one of the scores at SACs were not as high as they typically are, and we looked at it, and we allocated a few more resources, and they've come up. And so I think if we have these types of cuts, what I'm afraid is that structure, it's, it's not a redeployment, where actually that's, it's a loss of instructional time in the classroom is, is the way I'm indicating that would go. And I, if I'm wrong, let me know, but that's the way I see it, and I think the community should know that's the, the, the result. That would come from additional huge cuts. And, and, you know, anything in six figures would be a large cut.
Yeah. No, you, you're right. It would impact the work that teachers do with students, and it would impact, yeah, the work that students do around, in a variety of different disciplines. Yeah? I know you are. I know you are. I know, but you know, I guess, you know...
You're very protective of your staff, Dr. Lutze.
I am, and that is one of the challenges, right? But I guess that's one of the other difficulties here, that you, when you start having these conversations, right, with folks, the, we talk often about New Canaan being a destination district. New Canaan is a place where folks want to come, and as a result, we, we hire outstanding staff here, and they stay, and they learn, and they get better and better and better. The, when you start having these conversations, it starts to erode at that professional culture that you have in a district, and it's very difficult. It's, I need, there's a, we need to balance the need to communicate externally and communicate internally. And I certainly would never put anything specific on the table without talking to anybody who would be directly impacted first. Just couldn't do it.
Anyone else?
I'd just like to, you know, expand on what Sherry said, because I think that these programs that, you know, you've outlined, the VPA-type programs and the, and the club sports and things like that, these are the programs that have shown over and over again to engage students who aren't necessarily the most engaged in the traditional academic subjects. I mean, some, some of the kids are very engaged academically, but for those kids that you're trying to reach and who don't necessarily achieve in certain areas, these are the kind of things that bring kids in and keep them motivated and, and pursuing in, in schools. And so to see those kind of programs cut and, and, you know, is, is really, really tragic, I think, for the school system. I mean, because, you know, you know, we want every kid going through this district to get the most out of their educational experience, and if, if we can't, you know, if, if they're not engaged as, as much as maybe one kid might be in ELA or science or math, but if they can, you know, gravitate towards, you know, a VPA-type program, and, and that's what gets them motivated, I want to keep those kids motivated to, to keep achieving. And, and I, this is sad, and I, and it's hard to, to, it's hard to quantify and, and be specific, because it takes time, and, and it's not, not necessarily a linear, you know, change that happens overnight, and, but it does erode the, the quality of the experience for the kids in the, in this district, and, and it's, it's very sad to me to see.
Maria?
You know, I feel a little bit frustrated by this. I know in other districts, they have a very, a more line-by-line discussion at the board level. I don't want good programs to go away, I don't want the challenge program to go away. You know, I feel like we should be looking line by line, you know, why can't we cut 10% of textbooks, 10% of PD? I mean, this is a different year. Personally, I'm cutting stuff at my expenditures. You know, we all, this is a very different year. If our tax deduction is capped at a certain amount, and, you know, this new evaluations coming, the new assessment's going to happen, our tax bills are going to go up, I, I just don't believe that we can't look, you know, at things that won't impact students, even if we just shave a little bit off of each. Our kids are resilient, you know, I, I think that's a lesson in itself. And, you know, I, I feel like we're talking in mystery items, and I, I understand you have to stay, you know, a little bit, you know, you have to keep some stuff not specific here. here, but I do think we should look more closely at things, why not? You know, I think we have the best minds in the school, the best minds running the school, and, you know, I think it would benefit everyone. I don't think we should threaten any, you know, good programs that we want to keep.
Brendan.
I mean, I think it, it's, it's really easy to say that, but the reality of our budget is that, you know, textbooks, for example, I have it in front of me, are forty-nine thousand dollars next year. It's just absolutely tiny. What we spend money on is people largely, who are, you know, teaching our students, and on all of the other line items, Joanne, Brian, the entire staff have combed through every line item. And frankly, we have too. I mean, I've gone through a lot of different things in our budget. We, we have it all in front of us, down to, you know, I'm looking at line items of fifteen hundred dollars for office supplies. So, I, I don't think that we're not being diligent, I think we're absolutely being diligent. But the fact of the matter is, the budget is not, it's not one, and I want everyone to understand this, it's not one where you can just say, oh, it's, you know, take out the easy things, right? You actually need all of this to operate the New Canaan Public Schools. If you start, you know, ripping out things, you know, even books, okay, let's not buy any books next year, fifty thousand dollars, it just, it doesn't, it doesn't work. The schools don't work that way. It's, it's just not easy. And the reason Brian didn't, you know, walk through in detail everything is because we're dealing with people. You just can't do that. It's just, it's not the way the schools work.
You want to?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Lettsi.
Oh, Penny.
I just wanted to say one other thing, though. A lot of people say is they'll look at the budget that we had last year and they'll say, well, we're actually increasing your budget from last year to this year, so, you know, Board of Ed, you're really not being fair, because we're just reducing the increase, we're not reducing the educational experience. And because of the nature of our contracts and because of the nature of collective bargaining, you know, we, you know, we went to arbitration, we have cuts, I think we actually lost this year in the arbitration, I think we won two out of three, we won one year and lost two years in salary, and we arbitrated and we won on health insurance issues that were substantial help as well. But, you know, if you, if these cuts are put through, the town bodies need to understand they are cutting the program. It's not just that they're cutting the increase, it's going to result in program cuts in the New Canaan Public Schools, and I think the parents need to understand that too. And so, I just wanted to say that, that when I hear that mentioned, I don't think it's really the strongest argument for the cuts.
And you just, Penny, you just reminded me, because I, I have to correct the record here, because it's been misstated now twice. I thought I corrected it at the Board of Finance level and it got repeated at the Town Council level. The Board of Finance has a seat at all our teacher negotiations, so there is someone, there is a Board of Finance representative in those negotiations. They are represented, and they make a statement and they, they walk through the process with us. So, it was repeated again last week at the Town Council that they didn't, and that, so for all the public that might be watching this in the future, the Board of Finance is involved in our teacher negotiations.
Statute.
By statute.
Okay. And, and we're actually very pleased. We are all, it is the Board of Finance representative, I've been on three teacher negotiation committees, I'm going to volunteer for this summer, and the Board of Finance member always makes a presentation, is an extremely helpful member of the negotiations. So, it's been a very good collaboration between the town bodies and the school.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. All right. Moving on to the student walkout update and discussion with Dr. Lettsi.
Yep. As I'm sure you'll recall, the Board had scheduled a special meeting for last week, and we had a snow day on that day too. So, so we thought that we would give the Board an opportunity, I know that, feel a little like day late and a dollar short here, but at least if nothing else, just to debrief a little bit about what happened, and the Board have an opportunity to discuss if, if you'd like. So, to share with you briefly, the, we'll start at the high school where I spent my time. The schedule was adjusted a bit so that it was during a connections period, was that ten o'clock or so to about ten twenty. Students who chose to participate exited the building and stayed around the flagpole in the front of the building. Those that didn't went to their connections period, went and met their teacher there. The, the campus was closed about half an hour or so, I believe, prior to the event and afterwards. As a matter of fact, when I came in, they wouldn't let me through, so, I guess that's not true, they would have, but they, we had the police, with the help of the New Canaan Police Department, they had closed the entrance, both entrances, so the upper and lower here on Long Farm, and there were no students allowed to drive. And that just kept everything safe for along that main drag there. Students came out, they spent the seventeen minutes outside, there were three young ladies who organized the event, and one of them talked a bit about what had occurred, read through the names of the students from Parkland who had, who had passed away, who had been killed, and the teachers as well. Another student read a beautiful poem that she had written about safe schools and school violence. And then a third student was sort of led the group in a moment of silence and solidarity with the students from Parkland and others, and then talked a little bit about action, you know, sort of a call to action, what we do next. This is powerful and powerful to be together here, but if you really care about it, it shouldn't end here, and there are ways to get involved, whether it's writing and speaking and, and whatever might be. It was a very powerful event here at the high school. It was well-run, well-managed, the students were very respectful throughout. Over at SACs, a group of seventh graders, that, the ten o'clock time coincided with lunch, with recess, lunch and recess for the seventh grade. So, they were given, they were allowed to go outside in the beginning part of their lunch period if they so chose. About eighty or so students did, and it was led by a small group of students in the seventh grade who had spoken with Mr. Burdard in advance, and they spoke together about making SACs the best sort of school community it could possibly be. And the, I mean, I'll just read a little bit to you of what they had talked about, or what was read, and this is just, to me, so moving for seventh grade, they said, "I would like to ask, ask you to take the hand of the person next to you. You may feel uncomfortable, but sometimes in order to create a loving and supportive environment, you need to first make an effort and step out of your comfort zone. It might be a new or an old face. However, either way, I ask you to consider this person and the some eighty people around you and think about how to welcome them into your life. As you know, we're gathered here in the hopes of making change after the events of some fourteen mass shootings this year and four hundred thirty-eight people have been shot in schools." And went on to talk about, "Challenge yourself and peers to seek out someone in need. Make the effort to get to know someone unfamiliar, or just offer your ear to a friend in need of assurance. These simple acts will not only create a welcoming, loving, and accepting environment, but also happiness within." Now, these are seventh graders, you know, saying this to each other, really powerful, powerful stuff, I thought. The eighth graders, eighth graders had not come into the administration in advance, but knowing eighth graders, that wasn't a surprise, that, you know, that morning, some of them decided that they did want to participate. So, the auditorium was open to them, and so students that did went into the auditorium and had seventeen minutes of silence in the auditorium in respect for those students and the adults in Parkland who had been killed. So, those are the, sort of, the, the events by, here at the high school, students were back in the building by, by ten twenty, I believe, if not sooner. And I was told by Greg and Julie over at the middle school, the same thing happened at ten seventeen, you know, the students, the seventh grade students, then they came in and ate their lunch, so they went out to recess in the beginning, came in and ate their lunch, and then probably ran back outside to recess after wolfing down whatever they had. And the eighth graders went on to their class and then on to lunch after that. That's what happened here in the district.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Lettsi. Does anyone have any questions or? Oh, Gloria.
I just want to know if that will change, you know, according to Cabe's guidance, they, they clarified it was, even though students initiated the idea, it was backed by an organization that's political, and Cabe and CAPS confirmed that, really, that it, you know, there's a political backing to this, that this might set a precedent for political, you know, whether you are, no matter what side of an issue you're on. So, are we, is that something going forward, we're ready to deal with having, you know, there's, there's another one coming up on April twentieth?
Sure. Then there was more to the Cabe guidance, I think, as well. That was helpful for us, actually, as we, as we talked and planned and thought about it. First, I do want to, again, make the point, and I understand what you're saying about the, the national political piece, our students were very, very clear that they were doing this of their own volition, they weren't, you know, they were doing it in solidarity with the students from Parkland, and they did really go to, I think, great efforts to define it for themselves. There was even, there's the, N C T V did a nice job even covering the event and they're interviewing the students afterwards, and there was all about, you know, what they had created for their school for the moment. The, the reason I mentioned the, the connections period, that this was something that the students brought to us in this way, but it's not, we don't anticipate it to become a regular event, that students are sort of walking out. The, you know, there, we've been having some discussion about civil disobedience, you know, and Theroux's work around civil disobedience. You know, and that, the cornerstone of civil disobedience is to stand up against a government that you think is not, or an entity, a body, that you don't think is fairly representing you. We're telling our students, we're not that body, like, we, we also will stand up for safe schools, you know, we believe that all schools should be safe for every child, however you want to define that. So, as we talk to our students, it's about now sort of redirecting, if they want to make a state, if they want to make change, there are mechanisms to do that, but disrupting a school day isn't one of them. You know, it's more about getting, speaking to legislators, writing letters, getting involved, it's going to, whether it's going to Hartford, going to, there's lots and lots of ways to do that, but, you know, that's, we don't anticipate that it would be an ongoing thing in a, in our school, because the, we were, again, working with our students, that they're not, they shouldn't work to be disobedient to, with us, because we are supportive of their, of similar goals around safe schools.
I think that's sort of the conflict, is that it's facilitated by the tax-funded entities, you know, there's a lawsuit pending in New Milford, that it is the municipal support, the students could have walked out without support, that's their right.
And some did.
Right.
In different districts.
But I'm saying, without a school facilitating and changing the schedule, and, so, I, I get it, we're torn between supporting the students and making it a certain way versus just allowing them to get up, walk out, and suffer the consequences, which is part of civil disobedience, I would think.
It is.
So, but, but that document did make it clear that it is a precedent, by doing it, it is setting a precedent. It isn't like you can pick and choose which ones now. I think that sets the precedent.
By changing the schedule, it helps us in that realm, in that students didn't get up and walk out of class. You know, it was a passing period and then into the connections period, and they, if they weren't in connections, they were marked absent for that connections period. But it wasn't getting up and walking out of a class, and I think that's, that nuance was a part of the Cabe guidance, where they said, if, you know, if you're, if it's going to happen, if you're working with students to do this, one suggestion they had was to change your schedule so that, you know, put in advisory period or something else in, for that period, so that, so that you're not setting a precedent that students can walk out of class. So, I think that's...
Tom?
You bring up a good point there. Are there's other nuances as far as how you dealt with the day that you feel will be part of future policy as it relates to this kind of activity?
You know, I think that...
I'll throw something in there, for, for instance, closed campus would be an element which would allow you to sort of stay within policy, by not allowing outside visitors to participate.
Right.
That's just an example.
Yep, yep. No, that was, again, the closing campus was very helpful for the student safety, and I think that always student safety is the, was the top priority at all three of our grades, or, or from here in SACs. For instance, the eighth graders were not allowed, they were told they couldn't go outside, they had to stay inside the building. I think that the, the most powerful dimension of it was around the student voice and the students getting involved, right, becoming active voices in, in an area of concern for, for themselves. And they, it's very much aligned with the work, you even heard Sarah talk a little bit about student choice and voice in even, you know, middle school and some of the younger grades, around kind of how they're expressing and working and choosing their, their learning and their path. Policy implications around it, I think that really the, the experience shows us that, for me, when we have an administration that listens to and works with students, that mutual respect gets you to, at least in this instance, got us to a place where the students felt their voice was heard, their needs were met, the administration felt that they were able to do it in a way that kept everybody safe and, and kept it, you know, managed it in a way that made it appropriate for students to participate. To me, that's the, the key in it, was that being able to have those discussions, I don't want to say negotiations, but discussions with the administration and the students, so that it could become, it could be a positive event for all of those that were, that participated. The, beyond that, at this point, I don't see, you know, other policy implications, but it's something that we'll continue to reflect on a bit.
Jen?
I have like no voice, but I just wanted to jump in and say, I know when we were looking for the new high school principal, that was when we did a survey of parents and kids, that was a huge part, is that they wanted to be heard, the kids wanted to be heard, and I thought that, that the district and Mr. Egan did a fabulous job in communicating with parents, I thought that was great. And, you know, we had lots of discussions at home, so it really opened up communications with my kids, I had three kids that were there that day, and, you know, they all had, you know, one of them didn't go out, two of them did, and they all were totally comfortable with it. And, and again, it wasn't, it was really no, because, you know, I found out about the political aspect of it as well and, and did a little research on it, and this really came down to the fact that these kids, you know, they want to, they want to communicate how they feel, and they want to be protected, and they wanted to stand up for these kids, and so I thought it was great.
Sherry?
So, I just also want to add that I thought the administration, I thought Bill and the entire administrative team did an exceptional job with us. I think, you know, we have to always remember that we're a living, breathing educational institution, and yes, I understand we have policy that needs to be consistent, but we are at a very important moment in time in our country, and we also have to remember the proximity that we have to Newtown. So, a lot of these kids have an emotional connection to what's going on right now, and I think with the way that you, Bill, that you communicated this and allowed them the opportunity to respectfully and briefly, you know, voice their, their, you know, leadership on this issue, I think was important. I think it was brief, it was safe, it was, you know, it was very respectful, and I, I just thought you did an incredible job with all the communications, kind of respecting all the different stakeholder viewpoints, so I just want to thank you. I actually talked to one student, not, not even my own child, who said they learned more in that experience than they did in A P World last year, so I, you know, I mean, this is, this is an education too. This is an education too.
I, I just wanted to just mention, last night, Sixty Minutes did a summary of, or they did a piece on, on the students of Parkland that organized this event, and the students made a, a very specific point that there are lots of organizations that are trying to grab hold of their message, because it's convenient. And the students said, "If those organizations can help us get the word out, great, but it's our message, it's not, we're not allowing anyone else to take over our message." So, they made that very clear in that, in that piece, that it is, it is no other entity, no politicians, no, no group is allowed to take over their message, it's their message. And, you know, some people will, for convenience sake, say that they had the message, but, you know, I thought, if, if you would like to, you know, to watch that, I thought it was an important piece to hear those kids' voice, so, anyway.
All right. All right. Anyone else? Moving on then to the Statement of Accounts with Dr. Keating.
Good evening, everyone. You have before you February two thousand eighteen Statement of Accounts. We are two-thirds of the way through the fiscal year, which is quite an achievement, they all go by so quickly. Of our eighty-seven point six million dollar budget, we have spent fifty-eight point seven million, or fifty-one point four million dollars. We're encumbered at thirty-six percent of the budget, so a total encumbrance in expenditures are eighty-two million nine hundred twenty-seven thousand. This leaves us four point seven million dollars remaining to be spent this year, or five point four percent of our budget, and we continue to trend down on that remaining balance number. Last month, we were at seven point six, so down five point two, and we have four more months to go for the year. The one account that we are watching closely and continue to is the Tuition Out of District account, and we expect that to grow beyond what it is in the report right now, beyond the thirty-three thousand to over a hundred thousand. So, we'll, we'll be watching that closely. We are... We are watching other accounts within our budget to see if there's anything that we can transfer to cover that anticipated expenditure. But other than that, we're tracking very closely to budget for most of our accounts.
Thank you, Dr. Keating. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Thank you. All right. So moving on to our action items. The first item on our action item, and you should have a sheet in your pile of information, is an item to establish a BOE Headquarters Committee as a first read. Would I get a motion to approve as a first read the formation of a BOE Headquarters Committee? Sherry, second. Brendan, discussion, do we have any discussion? You have the special committee, the charter, I needed a word, the charter in front of you, so if you want to take a look at that. Brendan?
Yeah, just, you know, in light of the discussion in town on the number of buildings that the town owns and number of possible locations for the Board of Ed, you know, I think it makes a ton of sense for us to study it and really, you know, outline for the town what we think we need as far as, you know, space goes, and, you know, the type of space and access, sorts of things like that, and really work with the town collaboratively to make sure that if there is an opportunity to save money through relocating the Board of Ed offices, that we, you know, we take that opportunity. And so I think we should, we should absolutely welcome this and try to, try to move it forward.
You know, there's a saying, it's fall in love with the problem, not the solution. And so I always worry if people jump quickly to a solution without fully understanding, you know, the problem. So I think that this governance structure will allow the board to really sort of understand the complexity of the question and be able to make a well-informed recommendation to the full board around what, you know, what would be a good next step. I mean, it could be, and the whole world, it's all open, you know, at this point, to know. But this is a good way to study the problem and then make a recommendation as a solution.
Okay. Any other comments?
Just on scope and composition, I see that there will be at least three Board of Education members. Have you given thought to who from outside the board will be part of the committee?
So this is, this is a board committee?
This is strictly a board committee.
This is strictly a board committee, and we will bring people in to help us, you know, study it. And then if the town has an additional committee that they have, then, you know, these people would obviously be a natural fit to work with any town committee. But I think, you know, the whole intent is for us to sort of understand what, you know, what we're looking for and need and what might work for us as a board, so. Maria?
Other meetings are open, though, right? They would be noticed and?
Oh, yeah. It's a committee meeting.
Anyone could go.
Yeah, yeah, it's a committee meeting. It's like all our committees, they're noticed like any committee.
Any other?
Okay, so this is just a first read, we'll have the second read at our next meeting, and then we can vote then. Okay. Thank you, everybody. All right. So the next action I'm in is the last day of school for 2018. Due to school closures, if I could get a motion to reduce the number of student instructional days from 182 to 181 and keep the last day of school as June 22, 2018. Penny?
So moved.
Second. Jen? Any other discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay. Next item.
I've been there before.
Vex Robotics World Trip in Louisville, Kentucky, April 25 through the 28, 2018. Could I get a motion to approve the New Canaan High School Technology Student Association Vex Robotics Team Trip to the World Competition in Louisville, Kentucky, April 25 through 28? Can I get a motion? Sherry, second. Jen? Any discussion? I want to just say, congratulations to the team, this is the first time they have made it to the Worlds, and I would also like to, you know, congratulate all the STEM and all the work the district has done, because this shows, this is like just an amazing accomplishment and shows what our investment in STEM and all that programming is, you know, doing for these students. It doesn't happen without investments in science, technology, engineering, and math, so thank you to Mr. Zambrano. Okay, so any other comments?
I'll just briefly add that we always ask our advisors to be as cost-conscious as they can be, and Mr. Zambrano, I think, is, because they'll be taking a coach bus instead of flying on the trip, and they are sharing the bus with students from Massey High School as well. So Jim is doing a good job and pulling it all together, so he's keeping the costs down for our students, and it is truly nice, it's the first time in all the years he's been advising the program that they're going to Worlds, and the students are very excited about it. And he's got his chaperones lined up, his pair of chaperones, and he's all set.
Yeah, as they should be. Okay. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the South Grant Donation. Could I get a motion to approve a grant donation in the amount of $20,749.65 for the purchase of kinesthetic classroom equipment for South School? That was a mouthful. Could I have a motion to approve? Katrina, second. Hazel, any discussion? I'd just like to thank South School, this is an enormous donation and, you know, yet again, shows all the, you know, work our parents do to offset all the expenses of the district, so. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All Sports Booster Club Donation. Could I get a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $41,855 in support of winner coaching positions? Sherry, second. Penny, any discussion? All right, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Moving on to East School PTC Donation. Thank you, East School PTC. Move to approve $8,579 in donations from East School PTC in order to update the East School Faculty Lounge. May I have a motion to approve? Jen, second. Penny, any discussion?
Just a statement that, again, I'm overwhelmed by the parents' support of the teachers improving the faculty lounge, and I just think that that's terrific and this is a wonderful donation that will be well-used, so. All the donations are wonderful, but I just wanted to say that that one really spoke to me with it, helping the faculty.
It should also be voiced that this includes a significant donation from Dean Kitchens as well, so.
Oh, and they, you know, they did the donation.
It's a monetary from the PTC, but it's a, you know, this is, that should be recognized as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and they did the same thing at South, so that, you know, thank you again to Dean, Kitchens by Dean for doing that, that's, they've been very generous to this school system, so, thank you. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, right? And all those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Oh, another East School PTC Donation. Could I get a motion to approve $5,460.60 in donations from the East School PTC in order to improve East School Playground? Maria, second. Penny, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. We never turn down money from our PTCs.
It's a bonus, babe.
I know. Next, Saks PTC Donation. Oh my goodness. Could I get a motion to approve a donation in the amount of 100, oh, sorry, 12,000, sorry, my, I'm not reading. I know, that's why I was like, that dollar sign looked like a one. Sorry, guys.
I saw.
It was in the update, and we moved to add it. Move to approve the amount of 12,100, okay, this is, there's a lot of extra numbers in there.
There are some extra numbers.
That's why I had such a, I was like, wait, this number doesn't make sense.
I have it right here on the.
Number is 12,145,30.
There you go, 12,145,30.
Thank you, because I'm like, there's a reason I thought it was $100,000.
And just in light of Sherry's comment, as you discussed, we also wanted to thank a very, very generous parent. The reason why this number is so low is, again, a commercial contractor who's a parent at Saks Middle School donated all the research, did very, very lengthy investigation into the greatest cost-saving way to replace the kitchen, and is doing all the labor, plumbing and electrical, free of charge.
Does that person feel like, is it appropriate to?
Yes, so Rob Savo is the parent, and will be working with, closely with Dan Clark and all the facilities, reps at Saks, to do it.
Well, thank you, Rob Savo, that was, you know, very nice and generous, so we are so fortunate to have that. Okay.
And the number's not low.
Yeah.
Did we vote?
She said the number's so low.
Yeah, the number isn't low.
And the number's not low.
Okay, so let me get that number correct now. So approve the donation in the amount of $12,145.30 from Saks PTC in order to update Saks Faculty Lounge and Meeting Rooms. Motion. Katrina, second. Jen? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Wow, that was a big night. Thank you, everybody, for all the hard work. Thank you to the PTCs, because I know all the fundraising efforts don't happen without all your efforts, so thank you very much, this was amazing. Okay. Comments from the public? Do we have anyone wishing to address the board? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements and future business with Dr. Lettsi.
Sure, so our next meeting is April 2nd. I mentioned before, we're able to set the graduation date, so we'll go ahead and do that. We'll also, we're looking forward to an update from Jim Zambrano and the entire CTE department, so we'll hear a bit about everything that they're doing in STEM, and, you know, CTE encompasses so much, because you're talking about family and consumer sciences, you're talking about engineering, everything that's going downstairs, there's so much that Jim does, it'll be great to hear from him, get an update on how we're doing. NCTV, others.
Great. All right. So if I could get a motion to adjourn? Penny, second. Hazel, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.